Okay, let's come to order. We're here tonight to take our first look at Mr. Gill's budget proposal. So...
Yeah?
Okay, let's work off this sheet first, if we would.
Five pages.
Yes, it reflects what our budget was last year, which was two hundred fifty-seven million four- forty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars. And below that, we broke down the revenues from last year, two hundred fifty million four hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars. In order to get to that, that, of course, was comprised of sales tax, state funding, property tax. And in order to get to that two fifty-seven ninety-eight thousand ninety dollars, we also had to use four- six million three hundred one thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. And new revenue from various amendments was an additional two hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars to get us to two hundred fifty-seven million. That enabled us last year to avoid a tax increase, which was obviously important to the county commission. Want to say that as- before we get into discussing next year's dollar figures and- and changes to the budget, to our recommended budget, just say that we're probably going to, once again, have to rely on fund balance to get to where we need to get. And we're just counting heavily on the county commission not coming in there and taking pennies away from us. We've had a pretty good relationship with them over the past several years. And I'm going to ask that they don't do that, because it's difficult enough. We all know that we're not one of the higher funded systems in Tennessee. And it doesn't behoove anybody for them to take money during these difficult times when we've got to increase productivity. And one way to do that is, as you said, another additional hand. So, that said, what we're going to ask for is an additional nine million seven hundred eighty-seven thousand seventy-one dollars next year. And you'll see where that- how that's reflected. Upper left-hand column will increase by six point three million dollars, six million three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Staffing needs, that's based on two-and-a-half percent growth, and other needed positions. Now, in a few minutes, we'll look at this sheet, this other small packet. That shows various line items with a percentage increase in those particular line items. So, those staffing increases are four point one percent of that over last year. Benefits, we anticipate a one million four hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred five dollar increase. Jeff, I think you reflected those numbers wrong, have you?
Some of that is that shift in the- education jobs money is going to hit.
Okay, we'll talk a little more about that in a minute, yeah. So, the benefits, obviously, more employees, more goes up. Is our- percentage-wise, does our increase, does our requirement contribute more towards employee insurance than it was last year?
No, sir.
Same amount?
The retirement and the insurance rates are staying the same at this point.
Okay. Go ahead, why not?
No, I'm- I'm surprised by that. Every- every- every system I've talked to, they seem to have some substantial increases. So, that's pretty impressive that we didn't.
Right. So, does that- does it follow then that we won't be asking the teachers to...
I think there's an increase in teacher contribution. I don't know how much. Do you know, Ms. Barnes?
There has been some discussion, nothing has been said yet, that we have three options. Option one is kind of like our- I hate to use the term Cadillac after healthcare reform passed, but it is our richest one. That one will have a noticeable increase to the employees. Option two may have a slight increase. Option three, which is our high deductible, should have no increase. And our goal is to pay the same amount as employers for option one, two, or three.
Most folks take option two, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Which is the higher deductible, obviously, than the one, but lower than three.
Right.
So, and I'm- if I'm getting ahead of you.
No, you're okay.
All this discussion in the legislature about saving millions of dollars on insurance, can you- what are they talking about with that? I've never been quite clear, and it didn't seem like it-
Someone has figured that if they change, by changing that language, that it would be a savings to the local school systems of about sixteen million dollars. I have no idea how they came up with that number.
I mean, unless we cut benefits, how would we save money? That's what I never understood in all that discussion.
Well, I think that would have to be the assumption, that those systems would pass more of the cost on to their employees, to their teachers.
Alright, so there's not- it doesn't sound like there's an incredibly sound basis for that figure they were throwing around. I mean, other than we would be given the flexibility to do that.
Right, we would be given the flexibility, but I don't know how they came up with that.
Okay, and I haven't detected any enthusiasm on the part of our board or Mr. Gill to do that, so that we- anyway, okay, thank you.
Okay, Jeff, just for a second, wait a minute, never mind. Let's go to equipment. You'll see a substantial increase in equipment from one million eighty-eight thousand to one million eight hundred thousand. And that's because primarily there's a substantial increase in technology, five hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. We're getting a little behind with respect to updating computers, changing out hard drives and doing those things. And we've got to get back on track. And the reason we got behind is because we had to channel money in other directions in years past. So, that accounts for most of that increase. Now, there's something else, another expenditure.
Those evaluators that we're having to add.
Yeah, we're going to, as we know, everybody will have to evaluate next year. We talked about the other night, we'll also be bringing on, hopefully, five retirees to evaluate. And they've got to have some kind of computer equipment to evaluate, in particular, something like a Kindle or an iPad. So, we'll be buying probably a hundred and, how many, a hundred and twenty or thirty iPads or Kindles or some other equipment that we had- that weren't required in years past. But again, that was mandated by the state, so we're going to pick up the tab for it.
What would we anticipate that cost per unit to be?
I've built in, I think, five fifty per unit, five forty, five fifty per unit.
I don't know that we get a big break on those. Is there state- are there no state bid?
You're not getting much of a break.
It doesn't sound like a break, yeah.
No.
I was going to say, it- I'm not- I'm not a huge computer person. It strikes me that there's got to be some equipment out there that's less expensive than that. I mean, at the point of purchase, we'll find that out, I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't think many of the tablets, which is what we're looking at, are much cheaper than that.
Wow, I guess that's why I don't have one.
You just have a clipboard, isn't that the tip?
Okay, that accounts for a lot of that. And we can reference some of this stuff in these- in these other packets in a minute. Debt service increase of three thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars. That's primarily interest deal, is it, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
So, that- all that adds up to nine million seven hundred eighty-seven thousand seventy-one dollars, which takes us to that two sixty-six- two hundred sixty-six million eight hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars. Now, and we'll give you a more in-depth breakdown in just a second. If you look down at the bottom, we just reflected that on this page. One expenditure will be the state raise of one point six percent for the existing staff. That means a certified raise will be two million five hundred forty-four thousand two hundred forty-five dollars. We're not required to give classified the same raise, but I know the board is always taking a position when we give certified, we give classified. And assuming that we want to give classified, that'll total two- four hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars. And there's also a raise built in for bus drivers, and I'll explain that in just a second. And the raise with benefits is two million nine hundred seventy-four thousand ninety-seven dollars. And again, that is reflected in that two sixty-six total above. Okay, if you look at face-
Can I ask this question?
Yes, sir.
Would I be correct in saying that we really not- don't have a choice but to make that one point six percentage of the state?
That's going to be required and funded at the state supposedly. Now, there will be on top of that, right now, our intention is, we don't know- and it may have something to do with respect to how much money we get from the county, if they try to slash pennies away or try to do anything to us. But our intent is to ultimately get it to a three percent raise. And that may come from- that may- a lot of it will come from an education reform act. And we don't know if that's going to be raised or a one-time bonus is the issue. You know, obviously, if it's a raise, which would be our preference, you know, that's a lasting raise and reoccurs every year. And I hope we can do that. But we're still trying to- waiting on some numbers that you'll get here in the next few weeks.
I hope so.
Yeah.
And may I-
Yes, sir.
Just the- with the new administration, we're later than we often are. We meet with the commission on May twenty-fourth. May, the Thursday, Friday, before that, I will be at my state meeting getting answers to stuff. So, we may be making some major changes at that point.
Okay, on page two, you'll see- you'll see reflected certified staffing increases. Right now, we've got five additional teachers for Central Magnet. As we knew, we've known all along, we'll be adding teachers because they'll be expanding an additional grade next year. Hopefully, five will cut it. Mr. Wever, Mr. Oden, and all of us are aware, we're the third largest ESL system in the state. We'll have to add three additional teachers to accommodate those twenty-one hundred one students. Anticipating increase of a hundred seventy-four. Three elementary intervention teachers, that's in order to prevent Title I, it's a planning issue. Want to explain that, Jeff?
It just, as- we can have a kind of a- a target is the wrong word. We can try an enhanced program in our Title I schools. If it works and we start moving it out into our regular schools, then we can't charge- in a Title I school, we can no longer charge that program to Title I. Once we start doing it in our other schools, we get into some very strange supplanting rules in the federal programs.
Okay, then we have-
If it works, you don't- they don't want us to use it at other schools, is that basically all?
They want us to pick the tablet up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, thirty-five additional growth positions. That brings us to forty-six. Alright, now, just below that, special ed teachers, we're budgeting eleven point five special ed teachers. Four of them will be picking up with- you remember when we had all that ERA money from the government? We tried successfully to- to hire as few positions in there that we'd have to assume the salaries a few years back. But at the same time, we had to take advantage of that money and use it in a way that was acceptable. So, we'll be picking up funding for four of those ERA positions. Three of them are at Brown's Chapel and one is at Rockville Middle. And they're currently on payroll, we just have to assume the salaries. We'll be adding three special ed growth, three CDC growth, one behavior growth, and a half-time spectrum growth. Our total eleven point five teaching positions. Also, we're having to absorb in the GP, the three speech and language teachers. You know, we talked about, and I don't want to de-emphasize how important it is to have those people working with children, because it's critical that we do. And we talked about, well, can we get by with two, and the answer is no. They desperately need those positions to remain. We'll be adding eight voc ed teachers. That's largely driven because of state requirements plus student interest. Two psychologists, they've been funded through ERA, we'll have to pick the cost up on those this year. And below that, other sped areas, we'll be picking up a behavior specialist salary, an autism specialist, a compliance liaison, and a part-time transition specialist. So, that's three point five positions we have to incur at a hundred seventy thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars. We also have budgeted in there five teacher evaluators. They'll work up to a hundred and twenty days, maybe not all a hundred and twenty, maybe only part of that. We budgeted a hundred seventy-eight thousand, there are no benefits in there at all. It's just salary, isn't that right, Jeff? I believe that's correct.
Correct. The only benefit we will have to pay for them is their Medicare.
Okay. Alright, so that brings the total of seventy-nine new certified staff before benefits. Benefits totaled out to five hundred eleven, eight hundred twenty thousand, pardon me, five hundred eleven thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. FICA Medicare Retirement for new certified staff, and six hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars insurance for new certified staff. And total cost for all that is four million three hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. So, in retrospect, even though we're adding seventy-nine positions to the payroll, we're not really adding seventy-nine positions, it's just the salary for seventy-nine. So, that quickly drives up our budget.
Could I ask, what figure do you use to say that a teacher costs X, knowing full well that BS and zero is different than doctorate and thirty?
For a growth position, I would tend to use a BS and five. As you get into something like a guidance counselor, a principal, something, I look at what our average and that runs and budget it slightly more. Or substantially more in terms of-
Yes, sir.
Are some of these positions, are we mandated because of the race to the top agreement that we- that we're taking the money, so we have to do this? I'm not saying that we should.
I don't think so, no. I mean, obviously, a lot of them are just simply to meet that pupil teacher ratio, the BEP mandates. And you know, if you ask the public out there, they- a lot of the parents, and probably rightfully so, they'd want more- more help in with autistic kids. And principals tell you they need more behavior specialists. You know, I mean, we just basically are in a get-by mindset now.
If you look at the pupil growth that we're going to have, I mean, it requires- it obviously requires X number of teachers.
Absolutely.
To make that work. I mean, there's just no- there's no two ways around that, as long as we're growing the way we are.
I think we based it on- and we, Mr. Oden and I have been working some, and Ms. Barnes, about pupil teacher ratios in school. And most of them are pretty- pretty close to the- to the maximum allowable. Some even probably exceed, like, for example, it has to be an average of twenty to one K through three. But you can't exceed that as long as the overall average is in what, twenty-two, Mr. Oden, Paula?
It's a K-three average, cannot be over one to twenty.
Yeah, but you can get up to twenty-two, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, we're just-
It's not like twenty more come in.
Right, we're just getting by. And the sad thing is, we're losing positions in those title schools too. Several of them. Do you know off the top of your head, Ms. Barnes, some of the things we're losing?
Because we're- because we're losing money in title money, but for the federal government, we've got to reduce the amount that's issued to each school based on their plans. And so, they are losing positions. We've actually been able to absorb those teacher positions into most of the schools themselves by a vacancy they may have from a retirement or resignation. So, we don't actually have to place any of those teachers in the system anywhere, which has worked to our advantage. But we're losing one, two, three, four, six teachers out of one because of funding cuts from the federal budget.
You know, and this was at a time when we expected more of us, and then they're yanking funding. Right. Thank you. Okay. So, where were we? We went, okay. Like, we went, did we go all the way through page two? We did, didn't we, yeah? Alright, flipping to page three. We're in need of two additional nurses. We're needing more, but that's what we'll- we're budgeting. ESL, three point two ESL aides. Shows the salary, and also explains, matter of fact, let me just read down through there, one point two ESL growth, that's two people. One point nine regular ed growth, three people. So, you've got a total of six point three people. That really averages the way he factors it in, that's a total of ten people, because it's figured on a nine-month salary versus a twelve-month. But anyway, in retrospect, we'll be adding five people to Title III EAs, right, Jeff? Two people ESL growth.
Two- to ESL?
Yes.
With five of them having come from title.
From title money, okay. And then also, regular ed EAs, three folks. And if you recall, a few years ago, because of budgetary restrictions and the fact that we didn't want to lay anyone off, we increased, as people retired or people moved or they were non-renewed, we slowly gravitated towards getting a four-to-one dissemination of EAs per elementary teacher. In the old days, we were at three-to-one, but it was driven purely by budgetary cuts. So, anyway, and if you want more information on that, what we've tried to do is tie that, if you'll see it in the right far right-hand column, page seven. Page seven over here will give you more information on it, this is mine.
The thick report, Dr. Burns, the one with the black clip on it?
It's got the page, is there-
One has four pages?
There's a four-page, and then there's a thirty-one page.
This is the other one we're talking about?
I have the five-page and the thirty-one page.
You don't have the four-page?
No.
Maybe because I took your four-page.
That was my suspicion all along.
I don't have my four-page. Okay, going back to here. Anyway, after the right, it reflects where you could learn more about these, or you could reference more about them. Thank you, sir. So, accounting clerk, we'll be adding one hour back. I think that was because we had to move back to GP because of Title I limitations. System-wide, we'll be adding one-half custodian, that'd be what, eleven thousand five hundred dollars? Do we have a formula that we use, square footage, number of students in schools, number of portables? All that's how that's figured. Two maintenance workers, they asked for more, but that's all we could afford right now. Two new middle schools are coming off warranty, that's part of the reason. Right now, we have two computer techs in there. Just told you a while ago, we have older equipment, requires a lot more work. This is not the- the cabling and the bus camera guy. Now, next, we have the cabling and the bus cameras. Talked about that last week, fifteen dollar an hour position. So, that's twenty-one point thirty-eight increase in new staff, classified staff, before benefits of six hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. The FICA Medicare Retirement is one thirty-three, two ninety-eight. Insurance for the new classified, one seventy-nine, five ninety-two. New classified staff with benefits would be seven hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. And that brings our total new positions to a hundred point three eight, or five million three hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. That's based largely on two-and-a-half percent growth, and also the fact that we're inheriting these folks off of ERA and putting them in GP.
You know, we talked the other night, in our discussion about subgroups and at-risk groups, about how to handle them. It seemed to me the bottom line was more hands, EAs particularly. Doesn't appear that we've- you've included any additional ones in here, am I right about that?
Not many.
I mean, other than for group, yeah.
Not many. I mean, basically, what we've tried to do is just anticipate that two-and-a-half percent growth, make sure they're staffed within the BEP funding limits. Make sure we didn't cut these other speech, the language, the autism, the behavior, just kept them on the payroll. We're not really increasing any of that stuff, we're just taking them from ERA. I mean, there's just not money to get there. I mean, we anticipated that two hundred sixty-six million dollars that we'll need, we anticipate dipping into fund balance to get there. That's the bad news. The good news is, we got- we have some fund balance, and I'd like to say for two reasons. I think we manage our money well. And secondly, when they took the five cents from us a few years back on the BEP two-point-oh, remember for the capital projects? That enabled us to- we were paying for those out of our operational budget, and we were now- we were then able to hold that money back, so our fund balance would accumulate. But we hope they won't take too much, because we'll be opening two high schools here before you know it, and be responsible for opening those schools.
I was just raising that because as a board, we went through this planning process and identified that as our top priority. And now would be a time to discuss whether or not we want to back that up with some money. Problem, of course, is the money's tight.
While we're in discussion of personnel, how- how confident are we that we're supporting our first and second-year teachers through methods, methodologies, mentors, if you will, opportunities for them to be out of the classroom, to go to meetings, observations, and offer them some real support, other than the teacher across the hall? Which, I mean, I'm just convinced that that's critical to retain and not- retain the good ones and not break their spirit in that first year, because it's- it's tough.
We do a few things, that's a good question. We have assist, which is the first phase of training these guys. We have those instructional facilitators that go into the schools and work with teachers. We have probably as good as or better than almost any system professional development opportunities. You know, we work with principals to make sure that they don't beat down teachers and try to encourage and try to help them out. You know, we got our PLCs, which are invaluable with respect to those guys coming in board and becoming a member of the grade-level family.
Right, do we do any type of survey? For example, what will we do with our first-year teachers this year to ask them in May, how effective were we? Did you feel like you were supported, or what can we do to support them?
The teacher facilitators actually meet monthly, they call in their teachers. They have an open meeting for all of those teachers coming in, and at the end of the year, they have a large meeting, and they actually do a survey. And we'll include some of that in relation to how we report our teachers' performance.
And that- that survey in the past has been fairly positive, I'm glad to hear that. Sure, well, I- I- It's not like the tenth-year teacher doesn't need support as well, but the first-year teacher has to have it. I'm glad to hear that they are reporting back to us that they feel like they're getting that for the most part.
There was an article in the D and J this morning about how quickly Metro loses their teachers and their first-years. I forgot what the percentage was, but apparently it's very large.
I mean, it's a good way, if we can get that reputation, if we're doing that, if we can promote that, it's a good way for teachers in other systems to look at this as being a positive place to be, which is what we want. We want- we want the best ones here, we want to keep them. We want to find some way to attract them from other places. If they don't feel supported, they know they can come here and be supported.
What I have heard from various systems is that our staff development program has- is right up there top-notch, very, very well-respected, I think. You know, the way I- the information I get.
Other discussion before, Harry?
I tell you, you know, you raised a good point. I mean, it's not that we're thumbing our nose at what the board said, and want to understand it. And I know you were, but I don't- I mean, if there's somewhere you want to consider adding EAs or doing something like that, I don't know where we're going to- what we're going to cut to do that.
How much is one EA?
With ballpark, the benefits would drive that, cost, depending on the benefits, twenty to twenty-five, I mean, you could even- if one with family insurance, you could get twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand.
Let me ask you a question, Paula or Ms. Barnes, are we, in these title schools, we're losing EAs? You've said that a while ago.
Yes, sir, because of the budget.
Because of the budget. So, we're actually going in an opposite- opposite direction. Cause the budget, so we're actually going in an, an opposite, opposite direction of what the board wanted to go because of that funding. Uh, well, that is, that, I don't wanna be too dramatic here, but that's heart wrenching for a lot of those.
Those title schools especially. It'd be nice to at least replace those if we.
Right.
Figure out how much it would cost.
If y'all are open to it, I could talk to Ms. Wise about that. We have to make sure we don't get into another supplanting issue.
Yeah, I, I wanna.
I'll check with her tomorrow.
Anything else on page three? Okay, we're ready for the next page?
Four is, uh, other items, significant changes. Uh, I have a little bit difficult, this is, I try to put it in language that all of us that aren't accounting can't get understand. But Jeff probably gonna have to help you here. Uh, increase in twenty thousand because of services needed for homebound. Uh, next item, we budget a hundred ninety-five thousand less. Uh, than we did, uh, last year for instructional materials, cause we, because Jeff explained that.
If I, if you would look at page one of thirty-one with a black clip. Toward the bottom, it's at the top page of that set, in the bottom half of the page. Third, set of numbers from the left. You'll see that twenty thousand.
I'm interested in the next.
You'll see the hundred and ninety-five thousand with a negative by it.
Yeah, four twenty-nine.
Yeah, four twenty-nine. And I, I was just trying to go through in this section and show.
Now, why is it we're able to budget less?
Be, well, because in that particular one, we, we got some era money that we spent out of that line. It's going away. We don't need the expenditure and we won't have the revenue anyway for it, so it's showing as a drop. It, it's, it's not a recurring cost to us.
Okay, okay. What we are intending to do is allocate two additional dollars to the K eight schools. Uh, they don't get anywhere near what the high schools do per pupil. And we just think we need to add something to that to help the schools out. Uh, next line, same kinda deal, four ninety-nine on page one. Uh, it's an area issue too. We'll be budgeting one hundred forty-nine thousand dollars, one hun- forty, one forty-nine, one hundred less. And we're able to do that, why?
Well, this ties to central magnet startup money.
Okay.
For uniforms, library books, items like that.
All right. Uh, the next line shows sixty thousand dollars of the charge now. We have eight high schools with driver ed, uh, and the eighth became Holloway. Ultimately cash from, through the state driver ed fund. Next line, we'll be budgeting an additional five hundred thirty-three thousand for instructional equipment. Uh, and that's what we talked about a while ago, just basically replacing obsolete computers. Anything on any of that? Now, that driver ed money, that's, that federal or state money that comes to us?
State money.
So, it's kinda flow through?
Y- yes, sir, and it's just, has to be accounted for very strangely.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, the next line, well, if you're, you could look at page six, thirty-one, be easier to explain. Uh, three ninety-nine, a change there, other contracted. Other contracted services, we're budgeting thirty-five thousand dollars less than last year. Why, how are we able to do that, Jeff?
We, the phone support that we had, we have discontinued. That's the net savings.
All right. And anytime there's a question, just jump in there, anyone. Uh, next line, sixty-four thousand changes in different lines in the budget because coordinated school health is being handled directly. Uh, handled differently than it was. It's still funded, uh, by the state, hundred percent. And that could change next year, which if it does, it'll certainly jeopardize that position. Uh, next line, seventy-five thousand contracts from government agencies, uh, nineteen thousand increase in the SRO. Now, what SROs we, uh, the sheriff's department pays most of them, right?
At the alternative schools, we pay.
All right. The athletic trainers, I think we pay them eight thousand dollars each.
And there's an increase on that next year.
Why is that increased, do you know?
There hadn't been an increase in several years and MTSU is changing their pay.
Ambulance charges, we pay the ambulance to service the ball games. Started that a few years ago. Uh, and the rest of the increase is, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars shift due to moving the athletic trainers to this line item from three ninety-nine. And why did we move that?
Since it's now being, initially, we were working more with NHC. Now that it's direct bill to MTSU, it should be in that account.
Okay. So that's not an increased revenue?
It, it's, it's just a, a shift.
Okay.
One expense line to another.
All right. Next, contract service, athletic tr- okay, kinda tied to the other. Uh, seventeen thousand dollars other materials, elementary guidance now gets the BEP two hundred dollar teacher. Is that state?
Yes, sir.
Directed?
Clarification.
Yep. Nineteen thousand library book, uh, allocation is increased by fifty cents per student. That's something we decided we needed to do. Uh, hundred, and again, you guys have the authority to break down or add to whatever you want. Communication, uh, savings due to E-rate changes concerning trunk lines and internet. How are E-rate savers experiencing that?
They went to, that gets tweaked each year depending on your free reduce. There are changes to the program periodically. The state for this current year changed the way it's being handled and we are getting more of that money. We were cautious in what we budgeted for this current year and we're fine. We could've budgeted less this year, so we're budgeting less for the next year out.
Okay. The sixty-six thousand dollars in handheld computer devices, the iPads for a hundred and twenty evaluators. And we may look at some other options there, but that's what we're anticipating. Sixty thousand contract services for lawn mowing and portable moves. You know, we spent, and we'll talk about this probably some next week. We've been working real hard on principal request for computer, I mean, pardon me, uh, for portables. And, uh, trying to make sure, kinda pursuant to how we sold the high schools, that we'll hold off as best possible not buying more portables. In hopes that when we get the high school built, that'll shake loose several portables that we can put other places. And we've been able to basically, we started out with nineteen, we've talked to principals and, uh, short of buying portables, we think we can make it without buying portables, provided the ones we have, and it's kind of a sad commentary. The ones we have are in decent enough shape to move to another location. You know, they've been around so long. And, uh, you know, they were there when you and I were back in the schools, Mr. Jernigan, and, and, you know. The, the, some of those are still in use and been moved three or four times, but, uh, we're trying to hold.
That's one thing.
Sir?
Made out of logs, little log cabins.
Yeah, that's directed at both of us, I know. And, uh, built moats around them in the workshop. Anyway, uh, so, we're hoping to hold off on that. Uh, fifty thousand additional custodial supplies, four hundred fifty thousand more electricity money, right Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, we had a rough winter. A rough winter. How much, just, how much we spend on utilities?
Uh, Nearly twelve million dollars.
Twelve million dollars. Okay. Next page. We've, if we, we're, we're anticipating picking up seven hundred fifty, eight hundred more students probably. Maybe more than that. Right now, we think we're going to need a million seven thousand dollars additional money in transportation. Two hundred fifty-two thousand five additional transit routes. Sixty-three thousand, one special ed route, two hundred five thousand fuel price adjustments. What's that based on? Going to what rate?
Uh, the, the Department of Energy has Tennessee in the Midwest, which has caused some controversy. But they publish an index each week and that's what we use in calculating the cost. And more often than not, that is a slightly higher figure than I see when I drive around town.
All right, but I guess my question is, Jeff, I mean, what if we go to four dollars and fifty cents a gallon? And we, and we budget enough money?
No, sir. We will have to revisit that. And, and in the contract, we, we put that. There's a, there's a ceiling at which we have to reexamine the index.
About four dollars, isn't it? Somewhere around four dollars, I think.
What'd you say, Mr. Jernigan, did you hear?
I think it's somewhere around four dollars. Is that about right?
As far as the ceiling on.
On this, we've revisited it about.
Well, there's a, in contract, a contract allows us to revisit it whenever we feel like we need to revisit it. But if the, it kicks in, uh, at fifteen percent above three oh six. So, we're, we're quite a few dollars, a few cents above that right now. But, uh, as far as the ceiling is concerned, it's whenever, if the board decided we needed to revisit that, that number, they, they can at that point in time.
I believe during our discussion, it was random when we were talking about this. I think that's right.
Okay. Hundred six, eighty-six thousand dollars worth of raises. Uh, balanced growth in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, fuel pot, okay, so that totals out to one million seven thousand dollars.
So what percentage is that, the, the increase?
I think it's a.
Did you figure it that way?
It's a two percent raise right now. But I think if we reflect back, I, I don't. You know, three percent obviously would be another ninety thousand dollars. Uh, as raises go. Could you do a, like, a history of raises between now and maybe next week on what we've given bus drivers and classified, certified, to see that they're kinda proportionate?
We, we really haven't tried to tie those to, to certified and classified, have we? Or have we over the years?
I don't think we have. I mean, they're independent contractors versus the employees of board. That may make it a moot point. I don't, do y'all want that information?
I'd like to see it, yeah, sure. Cause I know we'll be hearing from them. I think that's a safe assumption. Uh, be nice to know. All right, questions on the? Anything to do with buses? Okay.
And next, data processing contracts. Uh, apparently we're spending, we had a major renewal this year for virus software, so there's a deduction of thirty-five thousand. Pardon me. And that's on page twenty-six, thirty-one, if you wanna reference that. Uh, sixty-one thousand to replace capital outlay funds transferred to the building program. How we replacing capital outlay fund?
Well, we, this year, we transferred it over to the building program to pay for the change, part of the change order. For the light sensors and just thinking that, that's a little money for y'all to have for odds and ends that come up.
Eighty-eight thousand net increase in other non-labor benefit items. Which all that totals out to one million nine hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. And the grand total for that, total for new staff and other items is seven million three hundred thirteen thousand dollars. And dropping down, uh, he's kinda reflected how we're transferring that era money into GP now. And we're picking it up, picking up twelve and a half additional positions, uh, that were funded by era money. Five hundred eighty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars. Classifieds, seven point four four positions, we're absorbing the cost in the GP, two hundred three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars, uh, which is total of nineteen point ninety-four positions, which is seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars. Benefits that accompany that are three hundred six thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars, total of one million ninety-five thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars.
So just to be clear, those are positions that were paid by stimulus, but now.
We're, we're assuming now, yes. Uh, that's what we'll be adding and, and what we're doing. Also, I think this is kind of a valuable paper. It says budget summarized by object code. It shows what we did last year versus what we're doing this year. Uh, for example, fourth line down, teachers, last year we had, uh, two thousand four hundred fifty point nine. Is that regular ed or, and special ed?
And vocational.
Regular ed and vocational, special is reflected elsewhere as are speech, language, autism.
Speech language is different.
If we get that point nine person to come in next month, I'd like, I'd like to see him.
Uh, so that's, uh, an increase of sixty-five and a half positions. Uh, next line, the next increase is, uh, we're adding a few hours, uh, someone in payroll, I believe, or accountant. Uh, two additional computer programmers. Uh, two psychologists, psychological personnel. Now, that's the ones we're adding from era funds, right?
Yes, sir.
It shows the position increase twenty-eight percent. Medical personnel, the two nurses, that's, uh, brings us to forty-four nurses. Uh, EA's will be adding thirteen point eight. And are some of those going back into title schools or replace that other? I don't recall that being the case.
And I'll, I'll check with, on that tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, custodial, we're only adding a half of one position. Maintenance, two folks. Uh, speech, language, three people we're picking up from era funds. Other salaries and wages, nine point five million, pardon me, nine point, nine point five position increase. And then on the next, next pages, it just reveals how much, like, for example, it's just pertinent information. Social security, uh, our contribution goes up by four hundred thousand dollars. State retirement goes up by five hundred thousand. Medical, our life insurance, oh, why there's a drop there?
The rates dropped.
The rates dropped, okay. Uh, medical insurance, our contribution goes, that, that's pretty staggering. We contribute twenty-eight point seven, six million a year towards medical insurance. Out of our operational budget. Unemployment compensation. Uh, employer Medicare. Anyway, I think that's interesting. You go down and see how, where the changes are there. But I think what we've laid out there, and here's additional information that's by, by function. Uh, really goes into more detail than what this does. Now, we hadn't done anything in tiers yet, and I guess we could go back. I don't think we did last year. And I don't know that, that helps y'all much, but, uh, I think, and once again, it's more of a just a, a copy or status quo budget for what we had last year. And it's still gonna be hard to get to where we need to get, which is two hundred sixty-six billion, without using a substantial amount of fund balance. Do you agree, Jeff?
I do totally, yes, sir.
Questions or discussion? I have one about snow days. Bus drivers and teachers are paid for snow days, if I'm correct. I can see Jeff grimacing, so I must not be exactly correct.
If we have to extend school, then the teachers come back and work those days without additional pay.
And classic, what's our, what's our policy in class?
And for a NEA, for example, if we extended school, then he or she would be paid for those days. We can't.
But EA, EA's, hang on Jeff, EA's are compensated for the first. EAs, hang on, Jeff. EAs are compensated for the first two snow days.
And then allow them to make up up to four additional snow days should they occur. Uh, adding extra hours, not witting seat for you, we during, we try to do it during a pay period and keep things straight. Uh, the work, principals just work with their staff to accommodate that. Should employee request that some say it's not gonna work, it's gonna only be an extra time.
And I think I went ahead and let them work an additional day or two beyond that, didn't I?
And this year, because we.
Try to help out.
We're allowing the days to work that last teacher work, to make up, yeah, of, of day.
But I, I think.
It doesn't seem exactly equitable to me, though.
Well, but when you think about the, the teacher, they're, they're hourly employees, and they're paid by the hour. Whereas teachers are working that thirty minutes extra every day as we stockpile days. So in retrospect. I'm not gonna say that. The teachers are compensated really.
Their salary, not hourly.
Yes.
I mean, that's part of the difference, I understand.
And under federal wage and hour law, if we pay those EAs upfront. And then have them work, we have to pay them again, or we're subject to a wage and hour claim.
If you pay them upfront for the snow days and then.
And then you need them to.
Make it up?
And then, y- you, you have to pay them for the hours worked. If you pay them in advance. As say, as the snow days happen, and then we have the makeup days, wage and hour would say you have to pay them again.
And that's the difference between salary.
And hourly.
Hourly.
Yes, sir.
When was the last time we had makeup days? Not since I've been on the board. And not for a long time before that, I don't believe.
But this year, they were only, I mean, they, they were really compensated for six of nine days if they chose to work those additional days.
Five plus we paid for two, so seven.
Seven.
Of course, but, you know, the ones that I heard from said, well, yeah, and they were appreciative of that, don't get me wrong, but then they said, well, but the teachers and the bus drivers didn't have to do.
And we compen, we didn't, we compensate bus drivers for every day?
They're on contract. They get paid a hundred and eighty days.
Right.
By contract.
Right.
We went through that.
Yeah, right.
That's right, that's right.
But that inclu, that includes snow days?
Uh, they, they get paid a hundred and eighty days.
Right.
Yeah.
And if we, but if we take snow days, they're not, they're not running a hundred and eighty.
So they don't run on days that's.
Okay, well, so they're getting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, same thing, yeah.
But I don't know if the other board members think this is worth pursuing, but I, I know there are different categories of employees, and there are different rules and regulations that apply. But I think it's something we should at least talk about. I may, I might just be totally off base, and y'all tell me if I am.
Of course, I think the public might be upset that people are paid for when they're not working hours, would, has been kind of discussed before, too. I don't have.
Right, no, I know. I mean, but.
I don't know what the solution is. I don't think.
There might not be one, but it just, there's an appearance.
It's unfair.
That it's unfair now.
But the teachers are working an additional half hour each day.
That's true.
To, to get those.
That is true.
Potential thirteen days.
Correct.
And, and they certainly, and, you know, and they're aware that they're doing that extra thirty minutes, so that, that might just mean there's no difference, I don't know. Or that there's not any unfairness.
Just trying to figure out the, the, like Jeff said, the, the federal law that, you know, tags the difference, compliance issues between salary. And in, well, and hourly. I think we all would like to make it more equitable, but I'm not sure.
Jeff? I just know when wage and hour issues have come up, they have been pursued.
I don't think I followed that.
Me either.
When employees have felt they had a concern under wage and hour, they have gone to wage and hour, and all but one of them, they were successful.
That's still.
Still.
This was way, this was before Mr. Gill.
Who do they pursue it with? Who do they pursue it with?
Uh, federal wage and hour.
So when you say they were successful, that.
We wrote them checks.
These were people who, over snow days or over?
This was over, other hourly pay issues.
Maybe it's something that the certified folks as a group are not concerned about, I don't know. I mean, it's hard for me to judge if, if it's a few or.
Do you hear much, Ms. Baller?
What I will say is that we hear from principals a lot that it is, um, that they, they really work with their staff to try to make sure they're given an opportunity to make up that time. And so we don't hear many complaints with regard to having opportunities to do it. But, you know, we hear sometimes in the TAC meetings from the TAC questions with Mr. Gill, this with teachers, you know, about EAs, uh, voicing concerns about not being able to work during those days or. Or not being paid for that time. But that's the only time I've really heard it.
What do you think the solution might be to, for days missed beyond, so we compensate them, how many days? Two? And then we've been letting them work three additional days. And this day, I said, yeah, I got so many, I said, find a way to, I mean, is the solution to somehow offer them. An opportunity to make those hours up through additional time? Does that circumvent any kind of wage and hour laws?
No.
Long as they don't exceed seven hours in a day, right?
Well, yeah, eight hours in a day.
Eight hours in a day.
One, one of the issues that has come up in the past has been supervision.
Is what?
Right.
Supervision during this makeup.
That's true.
And so you could say it's not, that since the teachers are working thirty extra minutes throughout the year, that they are really working for those days.
Yes. But like, for example, if you let them work, I mean, there's plenty to do the first two or three days after school.
Right.
Or opening a school up, I mean, you wouldn't wanna give them something that would lead to a workman's comp claim or something like that, you know, hauling heavy stuff around, but. I mean, we haven't been doing that, have we?
Because we try to make that time up during the reasonable periods, so it doesn't get so strung out that you can't keep up with it, because it, you know, it's pretty hard to manage all that pay that time.
And in most years, they are able to, I mean, five days in most years would cover it, right?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This year might be the lone exception.
Yeah.
So what, what did those two snow days cost for the classmates?
Or it's, and it's primarily the EAs, uh. And cafeteria staff, so however many hours times their hourly rate. So your, your EAs. Ten, twelve dollars an hour, seven hours, two days.
I think he's talking about what's it cost the whole system for a day?
Oh, oh, I'd, I'd have to. I, I can give you an estimate. Okay, uh.
Three hundred.
Well, I'm just raising it. I don't, I'm not hearing anybody else expressing much concern about it, so I'm, I'm, I just wanted to. Represent those people who've mentioned it to me, so that's what I'm doing.
Jeff, I didn't hear a lot this year, and I'm surprised, but I, in the past, it's been cafeteria workers that I had heard more from. But I, I didn't hear a lot from this year. Ha, are they handled basically the same way?
Yes, food service managers try to work with them, and they try to pad their time either before or after, because, again, their tasks are limited to what they can do. During the, the work periods at the school, so they try to pad in that time. And again, they just can't exceed a certain number of hours. And so the managers have to be real careful how they spread that time out, but I've really not heard much this year either, because they've been given opportunities to make up.
And, and I was surprised this year, based upon the past.
Just for EAs with benefits, low forty thousand dollars per day.
Well, would the, would the equitable thing, since the teachers are working that additional half hour, would there be any way to. Increase those days a little bit more to, to give them an opportunity to make up past that?
Wage and hour violation.
Wage and hour violation, yeah. Plus, a lot of them wanna go get their kids when school's out, you know, that's the reason they're working EA jobs anyway, it kind of matches their summer calendar.
Yes, sir.
Okay, other questions?
Uh, I think, not to.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I, I think probably, in my mind, the thing that had me a little bit perplexed is I'd forgotten that the teachers are actually working. An additional half hour each day to, to earn those days. So I'd forgotten that part.
And the reason, I mean, we, of course, we hear, you know. Pretty regular basis, in particular those TAC meetings, you know, they, they, I don't know how you say, they feel. They don't necessarily agree that they work those thirty minutes over. I mean, I don't think that's anything due to any of us. But the state does allow you to stockpile minutes, and the minimum amount they allow is thirty minutes. So, you know, we can't say, all right, we'll go six hundred and forty-five minutes, go to, and stockpile fifteen minutes, cause they won't allow it. So that's the, the best we can do is thirty minutes. And, you know, this is one of those years they're glad they worked the thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'd be making those nine days up in June. So, uh.
Well, I've never heard much of that being an issue. I, I think the stability of knowing that you're gonna start this day and end this day without having to worry about. Losing your spring break, that you paid tickets to go to Disney World for and so forth and so on, just, I, I, I think there's a, a trade-off that the teachers have accepted that I'm aware of.
Right.
That, that, that we're doing that, but the stability in knowing, than, than the knowledge that we will get out of school on May the twenty-ninth, that's what the calendar says. I don't have to worry about that. I can sign up and I can go to school. I can sit by vacations. I think that's a trade-off they're willing to take. That, that's my take on it.
What's the logic in having a restrict, and you might have said this. Apologies if I missed it, but of, of restricting the number of days you allow them to make up, why is there a cap on that? Cause we're already budgeted the money, right, of however many days they miss.
Is that, is that a ministry procedure?
I'd say it's a difficulty, just being able to put those hours in and not exceed forty in any given week, otherwise you're spreading it over multiple pay periods, and it's, it's just hard to track.
Well, the, the problem is, when do they make them up, you know?
Well, we try to have a make them up the one or, the, the week following a, a day missed, so it stays within a pay period.
But, but at what time of day, Paula? For example, when would they make those hours up? Like, and I, we, we can't add an hour to each day, can we, or can we?
Up to eight hours.
In some instances.
Is that when they're making it up, adding an hour a day, or?
For about seven, eight days, whatever you have to.
But my point is, there's not a day that you could declare, okay, we're gonna let you make this day up on Saturday or Sunday, because nobody's supervised. And all the other days, teachers, uh, were having school, so there are really few opportunities to make that time up.
At the end of the school year, when, when the students are out, how many days past the school year is their activity inside the facility? That there could be some utilization of?
Well, it doesn't matter. The principals are there for, what, two weeks after? Uh, and there's a lot going on. The custodians are starting to, you know, move furniture in the halls and clean and wax, uh, hall.
Instructional, any.
No, but there, there may be, uh.
And so are EAs. I mean, you'd be running liability for injury if you put them into another job. Like custodial or cleaning up or something, that one.
Yep, maybe.
What, the, the additional makeup day that Mr. Gill approved is the teacher work day this year. That one, yeah, the teachers will be there, there will be supervision. That was, and.
Okay. Other questions, comments, discussions? So our timetable from here is what, May twenty-fourth is our joint meeting?
Yes, sir.
But you won't have needed information until three days before then?
I don't know.
I mean, typically, we would have another meeting between now and then, and after we have time to digest this document. Is that the board's wishes to do that? Take some time to look this over and come back one more time? I mean, some years, we've had more than two, but I think last year, we had two, maybe the year before that. I mean, I think, given that there's not much wiggle room, I think two will be sufficient. Unless I hear otherwise.
You, you say two, it.
Two, including this one, yeah, one more. And the years where we had multiple tiers to look at, then there was more to discuss and more to move around, but. Unless we strike oil, it doesn't look like that's gonna be likely this time. So, does that sound like a plan to have one more budget meeting? We would need to have that before when?
When's, when's the joint meeting?
The joint meeting is May twenty-fourth.
And when's your state conference meeting?
And my conference is. The Wednesday the nineteenth. I'm, yeah, I will leave Wednesday the nineteenth and be back Friday, late Friday.
So in retrospect, you won't have any better idea before May nineteenth about our funding?
If, I haven't gotten any estimates from Lisa yet. I've played with my own, but, you know. I, we are supposed to get an April estimate from the state. I have not heard when we might expect that. That estimate normally isn't too good, but it'll give, it'll give you some clues.
So we should meet after that. I mean, it didn't, to me, doesn't seem feasible to meet, I mean, there's one day, one working day between your conference and our joint meeting, that doesn't. And that wouldn't give you enough time to really get everything together, I would imagine.
Did you hear? I don't think you did. Now, he, he was asking, would, would you return from your meeting on May seventeen? And then we have the twenty-fourth meeting, would that give, would that be feasible, and would that give you enough time to plan for a meeting in between those two dates?
It would only be the Monday that would be available, and then you'd have twenty-four hours to, then seem reasonable to me.
Well, if, if we didn't, if there weren't major changes, I can reconsolidate fairly quickly with minor changes. And then the time is to get things printed.
This makes me nervous doing it one day before.
Yeah. I mean, maybe the best thing to do, like, like you say, let everybody look at this, see if there's. You know, I, I don't know where we cut, because we're basically duplicating services by and large, aren't we, from last year?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know where we cut.
I don't think it'd be a matter of cutting, it'd be a matter of.
Be expanding.
Adding or moving, and even there, the moving, there's not much room, but.
Yeah.
I do want us to have another opportunity to, after we've had time to look at it, to come together and see if there's something we wanna do.
I'm sorry, Dr. Carr. There might be a scenario, for example. Uh, where the tax rate and sales tax, estate funding only gets us to two, two hundred sixty-two, two hundred sixty-three million dollars, at which point. We'd have to make the balance up out of fund balance to get where we were this year. That's provided nobody takes anything from us. Or makes an effort. And again, I'm gonna plead with these folks, don't, you know, don't mess with our revenue dollars. But that said, if we start adding on to where we get to two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight, two sixty-nine, that's coming from fund balance, right?
Yes, sir.
Are they going to frown if we, do we even have that kind of money in fund balance?
We should come in at that position this year, because we are seeing recovery in the local economy. We are seeing additional sales tax dollars flow in. We've done well on, based on the January estimate, it looks like we're doing well on our growth BEP funds. But they are going to be hesitant, they're not gonna wanna fund too much from a non-recurring source, our fund balance.
Because the following year, they, they'd have to make that up out of the tax rate.
Right.
Well, Joyce has got her calendar out. Do you see any days that work, Joyce?
I would say May ten, that's on a Tuesday.
May tenth?
Because the week of the sixteenth, we have two.
I'm out of pocket after May the ninth, so if, if, if we can get it in before then, now, I, I would be available. I'll be gone for three weeks after that.
Sorry, what?
May the ninth, I'll be, I'll be gone, uh, uh, unavailable for three weeks from May ninth on.
Oh, so you won't be here.
So if you could get it, if you could move it back a little bit before May ninth, I'd be available.
We have to do on Monday. Okay, we could do Monday the second at six.
What about that? Does that, that gives us what? A little over two weeks? Are we ready to confirm that, Joyce, or do you, do we need to think about it?
No, we're ready. I mean, if the board is okay with it.
Good with me.
It's available, and there's not many other days.
Yeah, so that's Monday, May.
Second.
Second.
We could start at six.
Well, cause I teach on Mondays, and I can't get here till six, so that's my fault.
It's all right.
Does that work for everybody? Yeah. Terry, is that all right with you?
Seven would be all right. Seven would be okay.
Seven would be okay.
It's all right with me.
You want seven? We can do it for you.
The weather's nice. We're going pretty strong. Here works outside.
Be fine with me.
Seven?
Now, it's getting pretty close to some board member's bedtime, though.
What did we say, seven o'clock?
Yes, sir.
I have to sleep through the second half of the meeting.
I'll tell you, you take a nap that afternoon.
If the vice president can do it, you can, brothers.
All right, so Monday, May second at seven, that'll be our... Probably our last whack. Full-fledged meeting at the budget, right? And then...
Depending on what the commission does.
Well, and that's true every year, you know. So... All right, well, thank you, Mr. Gill, Mr. Sandig, for putting this together. This is a lot of work. No, you did, Veronica. Well, then, Harry's got one more thing for a week.
One more thing, God. You know, we're recommending a three percent... At some point, there'll be a three percent raise, hopefully for all certified and classified. Their four positions that I'd like to pursue to their skill level and also their experience level is to raise them for, for example... And I don't think you have this sheet, but you may. We've got a purchasing clerk, we want it to change from a level four to a level four point five. And we have a maintenance clerk, a level four to a level four point five. And a maintenance, one of the workers at kitchen equipment, from a five to a six. And an HVAC position for a five to a six. And also, James Evans. I want to raise James' salary. He's, in my estimation, grossly underpaid for what he does. He's been here about six years, I believe, six and a half, and his responsibilities have been increased enormously over the years. And he's always on call, mornings and nights. Only two people are up on snowy nights are me and Mrs. Snell and James. That's where he and I have a hard time staying up at seven o'clock, Mr. Gergen. So I've got James in there to get him up where some of the coordinators are and which would be seventy-one hundred forty-four dollar increase. The whole thing pans out to sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars. I hope you'll... Hope you'll agree with those.
I will say, James, you remember a few years ago, we did that study of classified salary? I don't remember what year that was, and his position was way under. So this... I think this is a good move. Questions on that? Are those several? Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.